Good afternoon, everyone. The joint meeting of the Sacramento City Council and the Sacramento Housing Authority will please come to order. Would the clerk call the roll, please, to establish a quorum?
Thank you, Councilmember Kaplan. Councilmember Tao. We expect Mayor Pro Tem Talamontes momentarily. Councilmember Valenzuela.
Here.
Vice Mayor Maples.
Here.
Councilmember Guerra.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Councilmember Vang.
Here.
And Mayor Steinberg.
I am here. Councilmember Jennings, would you please lead us in the land acknowledgement? And then I want to ask McClatchy High School student Alina Wong to please lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Please rise for the opening acknowledgement in honor of Sacramento's indigenous people and tribal lands. To the original people of this land, the Nesean people, the Southern Maidu, Valley and Plains Miwok, Patnam-Wintum, and the people from the Wilton Ranche Ria, Sacramento's only federally recognized tribe. May we acknowledge and honor the native people who came before us and still walk beside us today on these ancestral lands by choosing to gather together today in the act of practice, and acknowledgement, and appreciation of Sacramento's indigenous people's history, their contributions, and their lives. Would you please remain standing as Alina comes to the microphone to present our pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much for coming to the meeting. I know one of Councilmember Jennings' interns and learning and doing a lot here, all of you. Thank you, young people, for staying engaged, involved, never giving up. Okay? Thank you. Members, let us begin with the agenda items. First, with the housing authority. I believe that two items, Items Three and Four, are going to be continued until, well, those are part of the city council agenda, to December the 3rd. Let us take Items One and Two first. Councilmember Vang, did you want to move to continue Three and Four?
Yeah, we could do that. I wanted to make some comments on Three and Four.
Okay, so let's hold off, then. Let's do Items One and Two first.
Great, thank you.
Item One.
Good afternoon, Mayor and councilmembers. Whitney Hinton with Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency. Staff is requesting to hold a Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act or TEFRA hearing, public hearing related to the conversion of Villa Hardin Coral Gables project. Villa Hardin Coral Gables is located in Meadowview area of the city of Sacramento. The project is a workforce and permanent supportive housing development. There are 82 units ranging in affordability levels of 25% to 50% of area median income. The developer and property management are John Stewart Company. Life Steps provides onsite case management, supportive services, and 15 hours of resident services per week. Construction began in November of 2021, and the project was scheduled to be completed by the end of February of 2023. However, due to construction delays, the project was not completed until June of 2023. Since then, rents have stabilized, and now the project is ready to close on permanent financing. However, due to the delays, a new TEFRA is required as the old, original TEFRA expired. In closing, staff is requesting to hold a Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act public hearing for Villa Hardin Coral Gables project, and staff and developers here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much. I know a lot of work goes into this. What, do we have public testimony, Madam Clerk?
None.
Okay, do we have council questions? We have Councilmember Vang.
Mayor, I would like to open and close the public hearing and then move this item. This was a really amazing project in the heart of Meadowview, and just really want to take this time to thank SHRA. With this last item, we'll be able to just close the books on this, and so we want to make sure we complete this project. And so with that, just really want to give kudos to SHRA for their great work on this project.
Terrific. So it's moved?
It's seconded.
Let's go back and look at the tape to see who came in first, seconded.
By a notion.
Okay. I think it was Councilmember Kaplan. All in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed abstain. Very good. Thank you. Item Two.
Good afternoon. Christine Weigert from SHRA. The report before you requests authorization to delegate authority to issue tax-exempt mortgage revenue bonds for affordable housing projects as needed to meet state application deadlines and to update SHRA's annual administrative fees. Last month, staff was before council presenting the 69th Street Apartments Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility, or TAFRA, hearing, and one or two of the approvals required for, one of two approvals required for issuing mortgage revenue bonds. As you may recall, due to the late award of state funds, SHRA did not have the required time to complete the project review and write a report to city council before the bond application deadlines. Not wanting to slow the project down, staff agreed to allow a statewide issuer to finance the affordable housing project. Staff is now returning with a recommendation on how to resolve this timing issue, which will allow SHRA, acting as the housing authority, to issue bonds in a more expedited manner. For background, mortgage revenue bonds are exempt from federal and state taxes. For this reason, bonds are an important funding source for affordable housing as they provide lower interest rate loans. Bonds for affordable housing issued in Sacramento city and county are issued by SHRA, acting as the housing authorities, and the bond issuance process is governed by SHRA's multifamily lending and mortgage revenue bond policies. As the bond issuer, SHRA ensures the necessary project due diligence, financial feasibility, quality management, and onsite services, which are crucial to a development's long-term success. Among other things, SHRA confirms adequate oversight for performing annual onsite inspections of units, common areas, and amenities. Onsite property records, resident service files, and resident services are reviewed. These activities play a vital role in confirming that residents are not overpaying for rent and that they live in well-maintained and safe housing. If bonds are issued by another entity, SHRA does not have the authority to monitor the project, conduct compliance visits, investigate resident concerns, or replace property management if needed. All affordable housing projects that intend to use bond financing are required to have an inducement resolution approved by the governing board. To request an inducement resolution, the project developer submits an application to SHRA. Once this information is reviewed, SHRA staff finals their report for inducement. An adoption of the inducement resolution signifies the intent to issue bonds but is not the final approval. Currently, approval of inducement resolutions require the staff have reports submitted with required agenda deadline. The report process, including internal review, requires the staff reports to be completed approximately six to eight weeks prior to the housing authority hearing. Since bond applications, which include an adopted inducement resolution, are only accepted by the State Debt Limit Allocation Committee two times a year, affordable housing developers are anxious to submit their applications as soon as they have secured award of all their funding. In two recent projects, developers received funding awards from the state less than four weeks prior to the bond application deadlines and were unable to serve, we were unable to serve as the bond issuer. Staff simply did not have the adequate time to analyze and compile the information to meet the city council report deadline. Since we are not the issuer, we will not legally have the ability to monitor the project. At the request of the Sacramento Housing Redevelopment Commission, staff reached out to our bond counsel, ORIC, to determine if a solution could be found. ORIC suggested staff-level approval of inducement resolutions. Staff-level authorization of the inducement resolution does not represent the board commitment or by the housing authority or allow the project to proceed with financing. The city council will still retain authority over the issuance of bonds through holding the required TEFRA hearing. A TEFRA hearing is a hearing conducted by the city council, you just had one, and it gives authorization for interested parties or opportunities for interested parties to express their views on the proposed bond issuance and on the nature and location of the project. Even with the inducement resolution process delegated to SHRA's executive director, no projects would be able to proceed nor receive any funding without the required city council TEFRA hearing. The staff-level approval of the inducement resolution would serve to expedite the process and allow more developers to participate in bond issuance through the city housing authority. In addition to investigating the ability to move more quickly when issuing bonds, staff also took this opportunity to review our bond fee schedule as it compares to other issuers. Currently, SHRA receives an annual bond administration fee equal to 12 and 1/2 basis points times the original bond amount. This fee is compensation for compliance monitoring and administration of regulatory restrictions. The fee is capped at $25,000 annually. This fee differs from statewide issuers such as CALHFA and CALPFH, PFA, sorry, too many acronyms. Two of the primary differences between SHRA's fees and the statewide issuer fees are statewide issuers charge five basis points versus SHRA's 12 and 1/2 basis points, and two statewide issuers charge fees based on the outstanding bond amount versus the original bond amount. As a result of our review, staff is proposing the annual administrative fee be reduced to five basis points of the outstanding bond amount to be in line with the statewide issuers, but the fee should be not less than $15,000 annually to cover annual monitoring costs. This will make the bond annual fee consistent with SHRA's loan fee, which is not to exceed $15,000 annually, but still provide the revenue needed to monitor and enforce the bond restrictions and to allow staff to respond to concerns brought to our attention by residents and other community members. By reducing our fee, we feel confident that fewer developers will be requesting the use of statewide issuers. Increasing the number of SHRA issuances will increase the overall amount of fees received by SHRA and ensure that all developments in the city are managed well. In closing, staff is requesting approval of the attached resolutions, which allow for staff-level inducement approvals and to amend SHRA's multifamily lending and mortgage revenue bond policies to reduce our annual monitoring fees, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
So, thank you, Christine. So let me see if I can just summarize it in lay language, as I've understood it. One, you're reducing some fees.
Yes.
And number two, by this inducement process giving the executive director some authority on the TEFRA hearing, you're trying to ensure that we don't miss out on competitive opportunities to go after resources because of having to attain prior approval from the council just to go out and compete. But instead, if you compete and bring the project to us, we can still say no if we thought it was a bad idea, right? Is that the summary of it?
That is absolutely correct.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Is there any public testimony on this one?
I have no public comments on this item.
Then we got Councilmember Guerra.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and thank you, Christine. Appreciate the clarifying nature of it. I think my biggest concern was that we wouldn't come back for a TEFRA hearing, and I think reducing the fee is important. That's been a constant issue that we've heard. But does the resolution, and for some reason I can't connect now to the internet here, so, does the resolution at all leverage that the applicant must go through SHRA if they find that they could go through CALHFA or another bond issuer? Is there anything in language that restricts someone from coming specifically to SHRA?
No. For example, if you go through CALHFA, which is a state entity. They can hold their own inducement hearings and their own TEFRA's. They don't even have to come before you as the local entity because they are the state of California. Other, if another issuer is used, which there have been instances, by reducing our fees, we hope that they'll be more interested in coming with us, but they still have to come before this body for the TEFRA. We just did that again with the 69th Street in your district not long ago, but that still could be an option.
Okay, all right, good. That's fine. Thank you. I'll move the item.
Thank you. Moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed abstain. So it shall be. Thank you. We now move to Items Three and Four, which I indicated that there would be a motion, I think by Councilmember Vang, to continue Items Three and Four, but we do have some public testimony. Do you want to speak first, Councilmember Vang?
Yeah, we can actually take the public testimony. No, okay, I'll go first.
Why don't you go first? And again, if the motion passes, which I believe it will, we will have the full opportunity to speak and organize community, et cetera, on the merits of the resolutions on the 3rd, and so today is really about a continuance.
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you so much. As you know, Mayor, as co-chair of the Racial Equity Committee, there has been a lot of work, tremendous work, invested in both resolutions by residents, careholders, city staff, community members, and also our racial equity committee to get to this moment. But unfortunately, as much as I would want to vote on both items today, I want to formally make a request that this council do move both agenda items Three and Four to a future 5:00 PM session for several reasons I want to put on record. And I know, Mayor, you are backing this. It looks like our agenda is pretty packed until you leave, and so we're hoping that we can move both of these items to December 3rd. I just wanted to just make a comment. There's just two concerns that I had, and the reason why we're moving both items. First is, if we are to ensure full community participation, both items should have been heard at 5:00 PM, as this was always the intent of the work behind both resolution. As a city, we have set on record that we're committed to prioritizing racial equity, and that starts by changing the kind of city practices that we currently have, and that's to ensure that when a topic as big as racial equity and reparations comes to council, I understand we have ad hoc committees, we have committees, but they're like working committees, and once those policies are made, we put it forth to the full council at 5:00 PM for deliberation. And so the intent was always to have both resolutions at 5:00 PM. In addition to concerns I have, not just the timing, because I would like for both items to be heard at 5:00 PM, is that I also just want to share on record that the draft racial equity resolution that was presented to the public on Thursday, which was posted on Thursday, is actually not the racial equity resolution that the Racial Equity Committee amended or voted on on October 29th. There were redline amendments actually made from the mayor's office, my office, and also Councilwoman Kaplan, and we voted on this resolution. However, the draft that's in front of you today is an edited version from the city manager's office, and it actually deletes major components of the resolution. And I just, and for me, this is just really concerning, and I wanted to share this on record because I know that if there is a policy or ordinance that is passed in law and ledge or budget and audit, there's usually no major changes that happens before it comes to mayor and council, and I think it's important that the Racial Equity Committee is treated the same way. And so there are some major changes that is no longer in the current resolution that was shared with the public. Specifically, I just want to name a few because I hope that when we have a debate publicly that we keep these items. One is, there was specific direction to the city manager that was eliminated from the resolution. There was also an ask from the committee that there's an annual assessment of our office diversity and equity department, an annual assessment to report back to the Racial Equity Committee. That was omitted from the city manager's version. There was a request to have a potential future ordinance, given that this is only a resolution, that was also omitted from the current resolution. And then there was language about ensuring equity lens for contracts and RFPs from the city that was also removed from the current draft. These are major changes that does not reflect the community or even me as the co-chair of the Racial Equity Committee, and so these are the reasons why I would like to move the item to December 3rd, to give us time to make sure that we have the amended resolution that was voted by the Racial Equity Committee and so that we can have a robust community conversation with the public at a 5:00 PM meeting. And those are my comments, Mayor. Thank you.
I think I want to speak to the process in a minute, and maybe what we ought to do is hear from the public, and then I'll make a comment. Okay?
I have five speakers on this item. First is Kao Yi Tao, then Lynn Barkley Baskin, Nia Moore Weathers.
I was like, is it good afternoon, good morning? Good afternoon, council and mayor. My name is Kao Yi. I am a Racial Equity Alliance member, and I just wanted to come here to voice my support. The words of Councilmember Mai Vang to delay the hearing of this item to a December 3rd meeting that would be more accessible for our community. The reality is that, like, it was a one-week turnaround in terms of learning that it was also going to be heard at today's 2:00 PM meeting, and I think in our end, and I know that with the intentions of all of our council members, we want our community to really participate in this process because that has been the process of the SCOR initiative so far. So I urge, yes, I just want to showcase my support in honoring us in providing more time for our community to be able to come out and participate. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, Lynn. Following Lynn is Nia Moore Weathers, Ryan McClinton, and Keon Bliss.
Thank you for hearing us, council. Appreciate it. I'm not a great extempore, Nia, speaker, but I will say, Councilmember Mai Vang, thank you. Thank you. You covered almost everything. I just want to say one more thing. The Racial Equity Alliance, of which I'm a part, even previous to the name, we entered into these negotiations and looking at this resolution in good faith that people believed that we could move this forward. And power innately is not bad, but when someone tries to take, or some entity tries to take, power away from the community, it starts to look like the integrity wanes. Let's put it that way. The integrity wanes. And so I really hope that we can bring back the integrity to this process because this is not how the process should work. Everyone knows that we cannot negotiate as a committee here. We have to negotiate outside of this chamber. And so in order to do that, we have to move this to December 3rd. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments, Nia.
Hello, everyone. Good afternoon. My name is Nia Moore Weathers. I'm a member of the Racial Equity Alliance, proud member of Youth Forward, a local nonprofit here in Sacramento, and also District 4 Citizen here in Sacramento. Super happy to be in front of you today, speaking about the resolution. I just want to go ahead and mirror all of the comments that have been left by my fellow alliance members and uplift the comments made by Councilmember Mai Vang. I think it's, this is a really important moment, not to belabor too long on the state of our national political space, right? But I think when you look at that and then you look at a piece of a document like this that has so much hope, that has so much promise, and also counts on us, speaking on integrity like Lynn just spoke about, speaks on us to challenge ourselves to be integral, right? And to be working together and to be in a community space. Something like this shouldn't be taken away from community members and my colleagues who have worked so hard to make this a document with integrity and to see its integrity be removed. So I would like to speak on that. Secondly, I'd like to say that when you have the opportunity for a document like this for our city, I think that it's good to have all of our community members be able to be present to speak on it, especially given the fact that this document speaks on communities that have seen oppression, right, throughout the history of our city. So I just leave that with y'all. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ryan McClinton and Keon Bliss.
Good afternoon, council, mayor. Ryan McClinton, he/him fam, is a family pronouns. I am also a Racial Equity Alliance member, public health advocate, as well as a number of hats that y'all have all heard me say too many times. I want to start by truly thanking Councilmember Mai Vang for her leadership and courageously speaking to, one, move in the process, but also the things that occurred within the process that are problematic. This resolution is designed to address those very types of things, right? How do we change the way that we govern for equity in our community? For me, being a resident of this my entire life of this city council, I don't know if I've seen a more representative council of the diversity of Sacramento that I'm looking at. However, our practices have to mirror that, too, and how we value that, the equity part of it, right? To move this process up a week's time where we know our communities can't be present, that's a huge failure. I would have felt so much better about this process if I would have seen nine councilmembers say, "We need to move this." That would have been the leadership that speaks to the spirit of this resolution. So I'm encouraged that we're actually in support of moving it and that we do have the opportunity to move forward. However, I deeply encourage you to dig deep and understand what is it that we have to get uncomfortable doing differently so that our communities are truly represented? Every one of you are elected by diverse populations that look just like this board right here, but not everybody's voice was in that election or in the process that leads to our governance. This is our opportunity to get that right. This is how we set the record straight. So we need to have our community here. We need to have those voices here, and we need to engage in authentic process that values every member of this community, makes it accessible to every member. I encourage that we have Zoom open back up for that, for the folks who can't physically get here. Let's do it, y'all. We have this opportunity. Let's not mess this up. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Keon Bliss is our final speaker on this item.
Greetings, city council. I'm here to speak as an individual that's been following this process somewhat and want to really thank you, Councilmember Vang, for speaking to the necessity of this. I'd also like to do something unorthodox and thank city manager Howard Chan for demonstrating why this equity resolution and these proposed measures are actually necessary in the first place. I mean, the profound lack of integrity it takes to change the very spirit of the resolution and make such significant changes while also seemingly agendizing it for a 2:00 PM meeting when most people are busy working and just trying to keep roof over their heads and keep things going are not here, when it's less likely for them to actually participate in this resolution. I've seen, I've been watching city council meetings since I first moved here back in 2016, and I continue to be just amazed at how, at the lack of transparency and integrity in, like, in the city culture that this measure really gets into directly. And I think this is immensely necessary at a 5:00 PM meeting, and I think that if this council genuinely cares about democratic representation, about meeting and talking with all community members, engaging all community members, that you would make this as the meeting and participation in this conversation as accessible as possible, including making it accessible via Zoom, because that's not a hard thing to do. Community-based organizations that have been contributing in this process do it all the time. You can make this a special meeting, and I would also encourage you not to do the usual tricks either of trying to merge this item with things like reparations and then limit our ability to participate to just two minutes, because as we all know, two minutes is not enough time to mean...
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Mayor, I have no more speakers.
Right, thank you. I'd like to make a couple of comments, if I might. Thank you to the members of the public for coming out. I hear you, and I think it is wholly appropriate that this item be continued to December 3rd in the evening, and thank you for pointing that out. We want to maximize participation. It is true that in these last weeks of the session, so to speak, last months, and my mayorship with a lot of things happening, that this is of at least equal priority to the other things that we're doing. And so, thank you, Councilmember Vang and the community, for pointing this out, and this will be continued to my last meeting on the 3rd of December at 5:00. I want to speak as well, though, to this process and what occurred here, maybe in a slightly different way. Like it or not, and believe me, community, as well as the other communities, like the business community, have been on different sides of this question depending on who sits in this center seat, but we have a system of divided government, like it or not. That's what the charter says. And so here's what, this is the way this process should work, and here are two truths under the charter and our rules of procedure. Number one, when a committee of the city council makes a decision in representation, that decision or recommendation needs to be taken to the city council unfiltered, period. However, the city manager maintains every right under the charter to make a recommendation However, the city manager maintains every right under the charter to make a recommendation that is different from what the committee does, both at the committee and before the entire city council. I know. So I'm just saying the way the process should be going forward. And then this esteemed elected body, whoever sits in these seats, can look at the committee passed resolution, the city manager's difference of opinion, a third option, a fourth option, the community's option, and then make a decision, and five votes wins. That's the way it should work, and it didn't quite work that way this time. But going forward, that's the way it needs to work. The committee resolution needs to be, if it's passed, needs to be the lead, the city manager, every right then to juxtapose an alternative right next to it and let the council decide. We all learn. We're all on a journey together, everybody. We're all learning. We're learning about the explicit things that affect community. We're looking, we're also learning about, as we call it, the implicit things that affect community's belief and trust. I would just urge all of you to keep the faith, because, thank you, Keon, to keep the faith because when you look at the evolution of this process and how far we have gotten in terms of the substance, in terms of the community building, in terms of the conversations that have been had that had not been had previously, that there's a lot of progress and there's a lot more work to do, a lot more work to do. So I just want to say that in terms of how the process should work going forward, and look forward to a great discussion on the 3rd of December about how we turn over the leadership to the next group of elected officials, including a number of returning members, and that we build some momentum behind this crucial effort. Thank you. Mr. Jennings?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to second the motion that's on the floor. I don't believe it's been seconded.
Okay, good.
I want to second the motion and make sure that we move this to December 3rd at 5:00 p.m. where the entire community can attend and participate, actively participate, whether that means opening it up to a Zoom or just having a regular meeting. But I want to make sure that whatever means is possible for the entire community to be able to participate, that we take value in that and make that happen. And thus in doing so, we give power back to the people. We give hope back to the people, and we give promise back to the people. And so I just want to make sure that I get this seconded on the floor, and I'm confident that this will happen on December 3rd at 5:00 p.m. or later. Thank you.
Okay. It's a motion to continue. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstain. All right. Thank you very much, everybody. See it 5:00 o'clock on the 3rd, if not before. All right, that does conclude the agenda.
One more item, item four.
Oh, the reparations. Well, no, I think we included three and four as part of the motion to continue. That was three and four. So they're both continued to the 3rd of December.
And I do have a read to the record.
We do. So that does conclude the agenda. Is there a reading into the record? Go ahead.
So, Mayor, you have a closed session that follows this agenda, so if I can read that to the record, then you don't have to reconvene at the dial.
Good, okay.
So we have a special meeting at 3:00 p.m. for a closed session. The closed session considers is four items pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.91 to discuss matters pertaining to pending litigation. Christina McGarvey versus City of Sacramento, Sacramento Superior Court, case number 34-2021-00293531. Item two is pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.91 to discuss matters pertaining to pending litigation via Concha Martinez v. City of Sacramento, Sacramento County Superior Case Number 34-2023-00334021. Item three is pursuant to Government Code Section 549569D1 to discuss matters pertaining to pending litigation. Sharon Frye versus City of Sacramento, U.S. District Court for Eastern District of California, case number 222CV01936. And the final item pursuant to Government Code Section 549569D, that's 54956.9D1 to discuss matters pertaining to pending litigation. Gary Loesch versus City of Sacramento, Sacramento Superior Court, case number 34-2022-00326669. So we do have a quorum. You may adjourn to closed session.
All right, thank you. Are there council ideas and questions or members of the community that want to testify on matters not on the agenda? Do we have any, Madam Clerk? Nope. No council members? Do we adjourn at 3:00 o'clock to closed session, or is it quarter to 3:00? I mean, do we go right in?
Closed session will start at 3:00.
3:00, okay. So we are adjourned till closed session at 3:00 and then regular session at 5:00 o'clock. We're adjourned.